Good morning. Today is July 29, 2015, 10 o'clock. Called the meeting to order for the County Commission. Eldon Callan.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
And I'm here. I ask that you stand for a moment of silent meditation and then we'll do a pledge for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with consents and approvals.
Okay, today we have 91 exonerations, $29,447.67 for the tax year 2015. And I also have a correction on the exoneration sheet signed on the 22nd for John Beverley Short, one for Ayers &amp; Ayers Holding Company. I need a replacement ticket for number 19138 Sawyer Beth Ann, and a replacement ticket for Franklin &amp; Jody Kuser, also a replacement ticket for Summer Legacy Protector Real Estate Trust.
Move? Oh, I'm sorry.
Vouchers: General County Fund, $239,017.3. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $14,196.30. Cole Severance Fund, $99,012.43. Camp Monthly, $6,042.25. Camp Monthly Purchasing Card, $4.46. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,008.15. Chestnut Ridge Park Purchasing Card, $574.53. Mason Dixon Park, $301.36. Mason Dixon Park Purchasing Card, $91.38. Home Confinement Fund, $2,063.94. Law Enforcement Forfeiture, $241.74, for a total of $365,065.47. And I have one budget revision for stepping stones.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. We will now have comments from the public at this time. If there's anyone who would like to speak, please state your name, your address, and we'd be more than willing to listen to you. And seeing that, again, everyone's on, the 104,000 people are on summer vacation, we appreciate it. I also think, though, I want to make it clear that sometimes we don't need the comments because they do watch the video and then they call us individually. So, again, and I want to thank West TV for that. Okay, at this time, we're very pleased to have Senator Bob Beach here, and I think he has some, a presentation that we're going to be looking forward to.
Welcome, interest. Good morning to you.
Morning.
Obviously, it's good to see you again this morning. Hard to talk yesterday, but we'll try. Well, on behalf of this governor, myself, and Senator President Gose, it's our pleasure to present to you today a grant for the purpose of Cooper's Rocks Foundation to move forward with building new restrooms there at the facility at State Forest. And happy today to present the foundation yourself, a grant for a total of $8,000.
And is there someone here to?
Dave Hawkins, President of the Cooper's Rock Foundation.
Glenn Jones, your role is now?
Vice President.
Vice President.
Charged with fundraising.
And I have to inform you, this may be the last of the CCP grants that we'll be receiving in the state. As you know, they've done away with that process, at least for the time being.
Right.
Maybe here in a few years, we'll see it come back, but this may be the last one we see coming to the commission. Again, happy to present them all to the governor and Senator President Gose.
Thank you.
Why don't you all come up here and take a picture all together? Why don't you let someone else take a picture? You get the vice president and you two.
If you want to give your camera to Renetta, I'm going to ask, is it your favor?
Put it on our website.
Thank you so much.
Let you two hold that and just let you stand in the middle.
Right.
They don't stand. If you put that to the photo, good. Sure. Yeah. I'm fit.
Okay, one, two, three. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thanks a lot.
Good to see you. You take care.
And we can tell you, we, Bobby Doyle and his crew did major renovations of our restrooms at Chestnut Ridge, and people talk about it. It's unbelievable, when you go to a park, how appreciative they are of going to the restroom. So, we're really excited that you're going to be able to do that.
I went to my family reunion, wore my Cooper's Rock hat, and got kudos for that. Say, hey, hey, Cooper's Rocks, Cooper's Rocks.
Well, gentlemen, thank you again.
Thank you. And again, well, since you're here, we want to thank you personally for what you were able to do yesterday. It was an extremely exciting time. I know you went through a lot to work with the governor and the other individuals in the state to get this approved.
You've been a team member there, Commissioner.
Yeah, so we really appreciate it.
And all of you who deserve the kudos as well.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the work with you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll hold off because I know there, I think Becca Finckler's outside organizing everyone.
They were assembling, yes.
Yeah, they're assembling out there. Also, we don't have anyone yet from the Youth Services Center?
Yes.
Okay, we'll hold off on that. Bill Austin? Okay, we're going to move forward. Hey, Renetta, why don't we do grants?
I'm here.
Hey. Glad to see you.
We just have, as you know, each year we have the Community Corrections Grant, West Virginia Community Corrections Grant, that funds the Day Report Center. The grant funds 70% of their operations. The County Commission funds 30%. We have the contract and several other documents for you to sign today. We were awarded $2,014,000, which is $11,760 less than last year. My understanding is all of the, all of the Day Report Centers throughout the state were cut this year, lack of funds, I assume. We just have the, you have a blue pen?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I keep it here now.
We have the contract.
Okay.
We have two copies of the EEOP Requirement Certification. That's the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. One has to go to the feds and one goes back to the state. The standard conditions and assurances, the parent's signature, and also the certification regarding lobbying, that we won't use any funds to do lobbying.
That we won't lobby?
That we won't lobby, with the funds for the Community Corrections Grant.
Oh, okay.
I also have a resolution. I know Ms. Blaney's not here to sign it, but I'll go ahead and read it. Be resolved that the commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Thomas C. Blum, President of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with the Division of Justice and Community Services to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the West Virginia Community Corrections Fund.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want to?
Is there anything else that needs to be approved?
Do we need to approve those?
Other than the resolution?
The president's signature on, on the contract, standard conditions.
Was that what the resolution said, or was that something different?
It was to authorize him, yes.
Right, that's what I thought. So, we don't need another motion for that.
No.
Okay.
It's in the resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Renetta? I see we have MJ here from Youth Services Center. You want to, we'll push you on right now.
All right, fantastic. I'm MJ Zink from Mon County Youth Services. I'm the director, the director down there. This is Kim Baker. She has been part-time working with us for the past month, and she has shown interest in the weekend position full-time. She has a solid work ethic, and she really has a desire to help the youth that we serve. So, upon your approval, I would like to hire her full-time as a weekend.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard. And also, just not to put any pressure on you, you know that two of us are on that board, so.
Hey.
So, we monitor very closely.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, MJ.
Okay, how about Becca Finckler? Come on down. I think you have something for us.
I have several people who are joining me, so.
Okay.
Come on in.
Come on up.
Just line right up here. So, how are y'all today?
We're doing great.
You can come right in front of us here. We're not important. You can stand in front of us.
You're very important. Okay, so, I wanted to come now that camping season is over, and Ed, I think that you, were you going to say, this is the, you want to say that now?
We, I, this is the day that, actually, the exact day that 100 years ago, a gentleman in Randolph County had an idea about having a camp. His name was Versus Shipman. And he tried to get Washington DC interested in his idea. He tried to get Extension at WVU interested in his idea, and nobody thought that it was a good idea. So, he did what any prudent man at the time would do. He went ahead and did it anyway. And so, he had a camp called Camp Good Luck, first camp ever that's held in the nation in Randolph County. And by chance or circumstance, the youth director occurs to happen upon the camp and sees, this is a good thing, okay? This was T.P. Kendrick. And T.P. when would formulate a plan that would involve eventually leading to establishment of Jackson's Mill, which would be the first state camp ever in the nation. So, congratulations to West Virginia and to its innovation. And we then formulated all the camping traditions. West Virginia did not invent 4H. It doesn't come from, you know, from West Virginia. But all camping traditions, the tribes and everything that we do ceremony-wise have came from courtesy of T.P. He formulated it all, and I think by 1926, he had Jackson's Mill built. So, this was a, this is a great day to remember, and these are our 4Hers.
So, as you all know, I'm Becca Finckler. I'm a 4H agent in Montague County, and we had a very successful 4H camping season, our largest numbers yet. We're so grateful, especially for the dining hall. Because of the dining hall and its capacity, we're able to allow more opportunities for children to participate in 4H camp. Of course, you have been so wonderful and so supportive of the 4H program in all ways, but especially in our use of Camp Monthly, so I wanted to make sure that you all knew how much we appreciate you. So, as Ed said, we do have several 4Hers here with us, some of our older youth, and I'm going to give them the opportunity to talk a little bit about camp this summer and what they learned, and if they enjoyed it, and other details. So, Cody, if you want to start?
I'm Cody, and thanks a lot for supporting us and for our camp. It's amazing time. We get to hang out with my friends, go and see during the, during the school year, make new friends, meet new people. Like, this year, we had a kid from, all the way from Russia, and he, he loved it. Like, he said, he said he's coming back next year to camp. And I, I don't know what I'd do without 4H. I just love it. It's my second family. This year, I won the Hand H for Older Camp, and I got my charting pin, highest ranked in 4, one of the highest ranks in 4H.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I just don't know what I'd do without camp.
Maybe Cody also was a first-year teen counselor at Younger Camp, so maybe tell him about that, too.
Yeah, it was, this is my first year as a counselor, and it, it was amazing. The kids were awesome. They, they, best, best kids I've ever counseled, well, first year, but still.
You could make that statement.
Yeah, that's a good statement.
Best group of kids I, because I always be babysitter, best group of kids I've ever met.
Excellent. Thank you, Cody. Unfortunately, this summer was the first of, in several, that I was unable to go to camp at Camp Monthly. But the reason I was absent is because, thanks to all of the positive experiences and motivation I perceived, like, going to camp with everyone at Camp Monthly, I was inspired to become an Extension Camping Instructor through WVU Extension here, and it was a wonderful experience. You get hired to go into camps and basically just make sure that it's a positive atmosphere for everyone involved, and you get a chance to travel the state and meet so many different 4Hers and kids across the nation. And I think we impacted, like, hundreds of thousands of, well, yeah, youth in the state overall through Extension. So, that was really fortunate to, like, do that, and I've just always been so privileged to have been able to camp at Camp Monthly. I've helped counsel at Day Camp, which is so wonderful as well, and Younger Camp, and been a camper at Older Camp for several years now. So, I can't wait to come back, but I also had a lot of fun this summer getting to see how things are done elsewhere.
All right. I've been a counselor for a while now at Younger Camp and attending Older Camp at Camp Monthly, and it's just, it's one of my favorite places to go in town, or in the state. It's so beautiful, and it's so nice, and everyone enjoys it, and it's a wonderful experience for the youth. And as an, like, an adult now, like, an older camper, meeting everybody there, making connections, and, you know, staying connected with those people throughout the year and after camp, during camp, is such a great time, and you meet so many people. You give, I mean, I talk, teach classes at Younger Camp, and I like to share, like, hobbies I'm interested in with the youth there, and they really enjoy it. And it's just a fun time, and I like to see the, the kids that are involved at Younger Camp especially, stay so involved and stay so interested in 4H because of such a great weekend camp. And so, thank you for providing such an opportunity to have that.
And then Mary is our 4H Program Assistant. I know that you've met Mary before, so Mary, is there anything you want to share?
Oh, just, you know, as a 4H'er from Montague County, growing up through the program, and now watching these wonderful youth come up and realizing what, what a valuable program our camping program is here in Montague County, and how the facilities have improved over the years. So, we really appreciate your help in keeping that going, and, you know, it's available to our youth in this county, and as you can see, it, it makes a big impact on them. So, thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say that you, you three young people are really the pride of Montague County, and what, what we want to build for everyone, good living, good opportunities. And we thank you for your all's leadership in bringing the youth along. I'm very proud of you.
I have to tell you, in our evening campfire programs, the tribes, everything is based on Native American history, so the tribes do different funny stunts and skits and songs. They write different things. And Alex was a star of one of our skits that portrayed our county commissioners, and he, so I thought that was pretty, pretty clever.
Did anyone tape it? I'd like to see.
Yeah, it was, yeah. I think you all would really enjoy that. It's pretty fun. They sat and studied the, the videos of what you do, so.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. It's so.
I must say, I must say that Alex nailed you.
I believe it. And just for the record, so, for Janet, too, could you give your name and address, each one of you, so we can get that down? Cody, if you want to go first?
So, you can find it later.
Yes, I can find you. Well, I know where to find those.
36, it's a metalized circle, Morgantown, West Virginia.
Okay.
Abby Foster, 1194 Lehigh Drive, Morgantown, West Virginia.
Alex Rubenstein, 1132 Anshur Drive.
You got that address downtown?
1132. Oh, I know where he lives.
We really appreciate Renetta. She has just been wonderful to us, and Diane, of course, has always been great, but's come to Renetta with a lot of questions, and she's always quick to answer. So, in honor of our fair this week, I would like to present you with your blue ribbons for, for 4H and being so supportive. You know, blue ribbon goes to the best, and I think you all are the best, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And if it's okay, I'd like to get a group picture before we come out.
Yes.
So, if you guys want to go, kind of.
Sure, come on.
Would you have a camera? You're up.
I'm like disrupting my entire.
Want to use my cellphone? Would you want to use my cellphone?
My name's Karen, Katie R. Yes.
How you doing?
Pretty good. No, we couldn't do it.
How's it going?
Good.
You need to stick it right up your mouth.
Yeah.
Check it out.
We'll do the first one, like, later.
See if we can all get together. Is that kind enough?
That's good. Ready, one, two, three.
Will you take it?
Yep. Yeah, let me take another one. Okay, one more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell you one thing, you know, maybe, and I'm sure Becca probably has it, since, and since you're the leaders, maybe you could come up with some ideas of positive and negative, what you might want to see, or what we can do to improve, because you've been there for a while, maybe, you know, and then, and I know Ed will definitely pass it on us on what, you know, the recommendations would be. So, if you wanted to do that, we could only make it stronger and better.
And I didn't even mention the pool. I know that Mr. Doyle, I wish he was here, because he was so instrumental in getting that pool ready. And I know Cody is a big pool lover, so I think that we all really appreciated that, but.
It should be noted that Bobby Doyle, as well as Randy Moore, gave up their entire weekend to make sure that that pool would be open on time for camp.
And thank you.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you all so much. We appreciate it. If I can be of any service, don't hesitate to let me know.
Thanks a lot. Take care.
Thank you.
Enjoy the day.
Thank you.
Always have something really nice and positive. This has been a good week for the county commissioners.
Yeah.
And now we have another good news. Bill Austin, letter of support for MPO, WVU Health Sciences Impact Assessment Grant Proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to be here, as always, and we really appreciate your all's continued support. We have had a grant opportunity with the American Planning Association come forward to perform a health impact assessment as part of our long-range transportation plan update. And the purpose of a health impact assessment is to take a look at proposed transportation projects and to evaluate their impact on the community's health. For example, if it encourages cycling and walking, which are healthy activities, it would get a higher score as we rate our projects in our long-range transportation plan. We're also proposing to take a look at the food impact, healthy food impact of transportation projects and access to healthy food, especially for those who are transit-dependent or don't have access to an automobile. We would be building a coalition if we received this grant within the community, including the Montague County Health Department, WVU Health Sciences Research, and a large group of stakeholders, including the MPO, to perform this assessment and to develop performance measures for our long-range transportation plan as required under federal legislation. We are asking for your all's support in this application to the American Planning Association, and the letter reads as follows. Dear Madam and Sir, this letter expresses the Montague County Commission's support for the proposal to conduct a health impact assessment of the Morgantown-Montague Metropolitan Planning Organization's Long-Range Transportation Plan Update. This project would also create a broad-based Mont County Plan for Health Coalition to encourage changes to policy systems and environmental activities that will positively impact physical activity and healthy eating. Current population projections estimate that Morgantown and Montague County will experience significant population increases of between 10,000 and 20,000 additional residents over the next 15 to 20 years. Integrating health into long-range plans is critical to the vitality of the region. The MM, MPO, is committed to providing leadership to regional transportation planning, promoting personal and social economic prosperity through sustainable growth. As part of the MPO, the County Commission understands the impact an LRTP has on commuter choice and access to healthy foods and places to engage in physical activity. Based on the successful model of our colleagues at the Nashville MPO, we support the MM, MPO's effort to emulate that work with the WVU School of Public Health, Health Research Center, to integrate health into our upcoming LRTP update. As an agency that supports the MM, MPO's efforts, we are excited about this opportunity to integrate many of the disparate residents, organizations, and volunteers of our area into a strong coalition for the betterment of Montague County, the Montague County Commission.
Move to approve the letter.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes?
Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate your work and your support on many things. I missed, there were so many different people out there. I missed thanking you personally, but I'll take this opportunity to thank you personally for your work on that interchange and planning the interchange. You were also a key part of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to working with that development and making it the best for the county. I would ask, would, the application is due on Friday?
You can sign it right now.
You can sign it now?
I have a blue pen.
That would be a, you want to look? That would be a big help.
Sure.
Fortunately, it also takes the endorsement of the local chapter of APA, and Chris Fletcher is the president of the local chapter of APA, so we kind of have an inside.
Inside.
That's good. It's been a nice week this week. We've been writing positive things.
It really has been. It's been very good, and I think we'll, we'll continue to make progress. I'm very, the things I'm hearing, I think we have good things coming.
I think statewide, there's a real push, even though this is an election year, to try and do something with the roads. I really think the community, not only here, but I think statewide, is very concerned about the infrastructure of, you know, transportation. I just wish we could get that across to the federal government that keeps kicking three month time.
Yeah.
They, they need to come up with some sort of solution.
The Senate actually had a very positive bill that they were considering, and the House wouldn't buy into it. And one of the things that was very positive about that bill was creating a transparent program for federal funds that local communities, smaller MPOs like ours, could apply for in a transparent process. So, rather than, you know, having to work all the mechanisms that you normally have to do, it would be an open application process. And I think that will be under consideration with the next bill. I think the reason they only picked three months was to put pressure on themselves to come up with a long-term.
Right.
Funding bill, a six-year bill, so we can keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, that'll be key for this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got all those. Okay, correspondence. We have requisition for payment for a Star City TIF.
This is requisition number 14, in the amount of $3,575.28 for CLT engineering, and this is to be paid from the Star City TIF funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any other correspondence? Diane?
No.
Either of you all? Okay. Let's go to unfinished business. We have, first, revisions to General County Fund, and you might want to explain why, just so.
Okay, this is the, at the end of the year, we determine what's left over in last year's budget. We carry that over. It's not anticipated. We estimate in March what we expect we might have. The estimate was $5 million. We carried over $5,601,697. So, we had $601,000 more than what we anticipated in March. So, we're putting that back into the budget. There also had to be an adjustment in the TIF funds. That was a deduction of $15,773. So, we decreased dams and dredging. That was an amount that is put into that line item for the operation of the locks. The exact amount that's been contributed is actually $17,136, so that will stay in there until next season. Likely, they're not going to be needing any more money this year. this year. There was a correction in the law enforcement budget, an overage there that the sheriff offered to, to return. I put $100,000 in contingencies, and the remainder is being put into capital projects for the construction, finishing of the Justice Center, and possibly renovations to the grounds.
Move to approve the revisions, the budget.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for that report. We have what we've been working on, and I think all three of us are really pleased about this, a wildlife call procedures. Do you want to just give a quick synopsis, or?
There was a group of people that originally started here in a work session, and that developed into a further meeting. USDA, the Health Department, of course, our K9 Adoption Center, Dana Johnson, and they, the final meeting, they came up with this wildlife call procedure. This will be distributed to police agencies, 911, and everyone will know, we can even, we'll post this on our website as well, that this is what you do in case of an emergency with a wild animal, mainly raccoons, that kind of thing. So, if you would like to adopt this today.
Yeah, it looked pretty good. You'd sent it out. Was there any further comments or anything come back from any that you sent it out to?
Couple of comments from Dr. Brooks, wanting to include a few other details, but I think in general, this covers the basics.
Okay. Yeah, I think I saw, I, I thought it was sort of covered in here. If you get too specific, then, then you actually mess things up, because there's, there's always got to fit in a category. I, I would move, we would adopt the wildlife call procedures as presented.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Any discussion? I just want to say, sometimes people say that they can't make a difference with this county commission, and one individual, Kara Lumley, brought this to our attention. It was a loophole. We resolved it, went forward, so I want to congratulate her, and also to show that people do make a difference, and we do listen. Call for the vote now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes, and we'll institute that immediately. Okay, we have dog warden agreement with Star City. I say with a smile.
By their council, and they have paid their entire year in advance.
Wow.
$2,564.11. So, just for the record, just when it's.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, and we appreciate Star City after they came forward and understood the situation. Is there any other old business?
No.
Okay, moving to new business, temporary ROW MUB.
Right-of-way agreement.
Okay.
Tim Moos here, if you'd like to ask questions of what this entails, exactly based using our.
Yeah, if you want to just give a quick synopsis.
Very briefly, we've been asked to, Morgantown Tilly Board's been asked to run a sewer extension from across the road area up to Tibbs Road.
Okay.
This is to serve a new development on Tibbs Road. The route of that sewer takes us through the Board of Education property, but very near the county's library property. The actual construction of the pipeline is going to require us to use the land surface of the library property. The pipe will be located on the Board of Education's property, but so near the property line that as a practical matter, we need to travel on both sides of the, of the property line. So, we're asking the county commission for a temporary right-of-way so that we can lawfully do that work and have access to the land surface along the property line of the library parcel.
Commissioners, have any questions?
I was glance through this real quick. The, is, it's a temporary right-of-way, but I don't, I don't see a date of, of end, or, but, but would you have to have more than just a, would you have to have a right-of-way to fix that at any time or check it? It seems to, it seems, I don't have any problem with passing it the way it is. It just seems to me that it, that it would be a permanent right to, to work on that pipe. Is that right?
The document in front of you is just a temporary agreement to allow for the construction of the pipe.
Right, right.
Ideally, a, a, a more formal, permanent agreement, as you've suggested, might be better, but we're, we're comfortable with the interagency cooperation that we always have between the county commission and MUB. We're comfortable with a temporary right-of-way.
So, you trust us?
Absolutely.
I'd move we approve the temporary right-of-way.
My second. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do you know when, I didn't, I didn't skim through it. When are you looking, preparing to start this, or?
I believe this construction will start within the next 90 days. It should be completed within two or three weeks following that.
Okay.
And at that point, this agreement terminates.
Great.
Thanks a lot, Tim, for all the work.
Yeah, and we do appreciate it. So nice to hear a beginning and ending dates on construction. Is there any other new business? No? Okay. Do we have any reports from elected officials? Does anyone want to say, ah, come on up?
Just want to report, you know, we just finished our satellites for the month of July here for the offsite, and we've had such a great turnout that we're going to do something different. We're going to extend our satellites into August. So, I'm actually working with about six other sites to look at exploring that for the month of August. It'll help people, for one, with the deadline being September 1st, get their forms in, and help encourage them to get back in, but I've been talking to a few sites, and we're trying to work with the hospitals, too, setting up a little station there for that. So, I know we do have Wowsill Senior Center scheduled for next Thursday for sure, and I'm just waiting on other calls back. So, hopefully, once I get that information, I'll let you all know, but we wanted to extend it because the, we've had a great attendance for these satellites in July, so just wanted to go ahead and continue another month. Outside of that, our online filing is, we're probably about 4,800 right now.
Really?
People using it, so.
Wow.
It's been, it's been a bonus right now, so. Aside of that, that's it.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Grandville Police Department's hosting a, have a movie with a cop on Saturday, and the general public's invited 15 years younger. They're going to get an autograph baseball from the Black Bears, and that'll be a pretty good thing. I'm going to put some flyers on the.
What's it going to be?
At the Town Center ceremony.
At the Town Center? What, are you going to play the Terminator or?
Yeah, they're playing Marvel's Ant-Man.
Oh, really?
Oh, really?
That's a pretty good move.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah.
Starts at 1:30.
Neat.
If you know of any kids that would like to come, there's a flyer.
Let's see if my grandson wants to come. That'll be great. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Any other?
Did you get a copy of the flyer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Good. Report from county.
Kelly.
I'm not an elected official, but.
Oh, well, I, that's, well, as I said, yeah, we just.
The sheriff had hoped to be here. First, I want to present to Diane, this is the settlement that was submitted to the State Auditorium's office yesterday, and then I have a copy of a press release that we put out yesterday. We had hoped to be up and running with online tax payments by August the 1st. There has been a delay, as there usually is with new technology. So, there's a bit of a delay, and as of August the 15th, we'll be online and up and running. And this actually gives step-by-step as to where people need to go to be able to pay online with a credit card. We will not be accepting credit cards in the office.
Right.
One step at a time, so. So, on August the 15th, they can go to the sheriff's website and follow these steps and take their taxes with a credit card online.
On September 1st, right?
That's great.
Right, before September 1st, yes. And just so that everybody is aware, the cost associated with this, which would be the percentage that the credit card company charges, will be charged back to the taxpayer.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you and Harry and the sheriff and Mark coming up yesterday. That was, that was very, that was very nice. Kelly said she didn't know whether she'd get away, so I told her that I was going to distribute a picture of her.
That's right, yeah.
That was a good picture. I, I use that banner as, as my Facebook banner.
Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing them, we'll go to Ed. Do you have any report?
I missed last week saying that we want to commend the Public Service Commission for establishing another taxi service in the area. It is most appreciated, and I think it will be used very heavily. I'd like to also commend Commissioner Callen for all the work he did and put in, the meetings he's attended on behalf of the STIF that we had ceremony yesterday. It's really great. And to Tom, glad to welcome him to the Wadestown Parade. Came to the parade last week, as well as the town meeting that we, and Joe Statler gave a very good summary of what is going on relative, not only to the western end of the county in DOH, but the, the rest of the county. So, to commend him as well. And I want to make sure we still stand behind our local bill to keep this before the legislature to see that we can help the citizens in Montague County get the roads that we deserve. The fair is ongoing, as you know, so if you have no excuse, please come out and see, and commissioners, I want you to come out and see what the work has been done. You gave money to the fair in Myland Park. It is most appreciated. The barn is exceptional. We have something that a lot of counties don't have, so please come out and join us at the Montague County Fair. The gates open at 5:00 each and every night, except for Saturday, and we open at noon, and we're going to be open from Saturday for Kids' Day, Sharon Seaman's Kids' Day, from noon until 11:00 P.M. It'll be a long day for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alvin?
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. I appreciate that. It, it is a lot of work, and you've got to be on the road a lot, but I appreciate your kind words, and both yours and Commissioner Bloom's support in this whole effort. So, thank you for, for that. I, I would like, I, I would like to move at this, at this time that we prepare a letter of thanks to Governor Earl Ray Tomlin.
Yes.
And the Secretary of Commerce Keith Burdette, signed by all three commissioners, thanking them for allowing us to expand the bonded capacity and move to the west side.
I will happily second that.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes?
Thank you. Now, now on to the next step. That's what I do, okay? Tomorrow, just tomorrow, there's been called in Charleston Legislative Meeting of the County Commissioners Association to look at the new legislation. Specifically, we're looking at the home rule and local bill for presentation to our annual meeting, which will be held at the waterfront on August 9th, 10th, and 11th. I think that's Sunday, Sunday and the 9th. 9th, 10th, and 11th, the County Commissioners Association will be meeting here at the waterfront, and so I'll be in Charleston tomorrow, working on legislation for that presentation to the annual meeting. If there are anything that you want me to include in addition that, please, please pass that on to me, and I'll bring it up with the other members of the legislative committee. And that's all I got.
Okay. First, yes, I'd like to agree with Commissioner Hawkins and thank Commissioner Callen. It was an exciting day yesterday, and, you know, and I'm glad I have down here to, yeah, write a letter to the governor and, you know, to Keith Burdette to thank them for, and I guess the best comment is to say that, to invest in Montague County residents and, and our commission, and I'm just really thrilled that that is moving forward. Second, I want to congratulate Ed. I'll tell you, that's the first time I've been in the, the county fair parade, and it was enormous. I mean, well-run, situated, and that's a lot of, I mean, I think, I think the people were appreciative after several years, whether it was rain or whatever, it was packed, and it really went well, and it was a lot of fun. I do appreciate that. Basically, I, I just think this has just been a tremendous week for the, the three of us, and, and I really think that it's important that the state believes in the direction that the commission is moving, and hopefully, we can start working on developing that west side and move forward. So, it's just been a really good week. I know we have, we're going to go at 11 o'clock, another development that's going on. What is it? I apologize. What is it actually?
Groundbreaking, American Campus.
American Campus Groundbreaking. It's, it's another facility that's going in the Morgantown. And also one other thing, and I do want to congratulate, people don't realize that we work in our work sessions, and I want to congratulate Diane and Renetta. We are working very hard, and we've sent out a letter to our different departments on the Mon County Courthouse and County Employee Personnel Policies and Procedures. That will be going on our work session next week, and then two weeks from then, we are going to look and see if we can then approve a personnel policies and procedures for this county, and I'm very excited about that. So, unless there's anything else, I'll ask for a motion to.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. We're adjourned.